Okay, it is Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting to order. And in lieu of invocation, I'd like to have everyone, please take a moment of silence and pray or do whatever you would do to remember our soldiers that were military that was murdered on August 26th and also as a time of remembrance for the, as we come upon the 20th anniversary of the attack on our country, and we will observe that now. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matts.
Here.
McGurran.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Noonan.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zeiss.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, item two, review of and approved minutes from the regular board meeting of 3 August 2021 and special board meeting of 9 August 2021. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Amy, is there any discussion, corrections, or amendments to the meetings?
Could I ask to amend that I abstained from the vote on my appointment to the cables?
Okay, Melissa, did you?
Okay, I can make that.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Mary. Any other amendments or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item three is comments from the floor, which is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here that has something to bring up during the comments from the floor?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Please.
Come up here.
Yep.
Say your name and address, please.
Hi, I am Walter Byrne. I live on Sixth Street. I just had a question on, so, the drainage for the road that was just put in after it rained, it's still pooling a lot, and I was just wondering if anybody else saw that as an issue, or if anything was going to be done about that?
Can you tell us whereabouts that is?
Yeah, it's right by the two new drains.
In front of what address is it?
I-
Address?
Not sure.
Not sure on the address.
Okay, put it in the-
But on the road-
This section that was just up?
Yes, and I've got a picture.
I'll give you my card, and you can email it to me, and I'll address it with the construction.
Awesome.
Yep, we can forward you to any of the other people that could help us with a new subject like this. It's kind of, we can't talk about it, but we really want to hope that Chief can help you to find out that answer.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Walter.
Anyone else? Hearing none. On to item four, library board update. Discussion only. Shelley, you're up.
Thank you for having me on the agenda tonight. I want to thank Melissa for all the administrative support you provide. President Wecken, thanks for your willingness to have conversations about community issues, and your chief was our IT person tonight, so I think if law enforcement gets old, we have a future for you, yes.
He's got many hats.
I was going to say, a library could use your IT skills, so. So I'm here to present tonight about the funding request to you, the funding situation at the library, and give some brief context and history for people who might be watching this or who see it on the website later, because not everybody is up to speed on the issues, and try to stick to the 15-minute timeframe we agreed to. So first, I just want to talk a little bit about modern libraries. The library world today, it is not the library that I grew up in. It is not even the library that I took my 16-year-old daughter to when she was a baby. Libraries have transformed, which is why we have a new tagline that books are just the beginning. So of course, our core function is literacy. It will always be literacy, but the number of literacies continues to grow, and technology right now is one of those large ones. Cultural and art experiences, of course, but the one I wanted to really touch base on is how programs, services, and resources we provide have sort of opened up a world of build-your-own-degree. We are an extension of our public education system, but we are the part that doesn't give you a cookie-cutter curriculum. It is self-directed, it is independent, and experiential. And by that, I mean, if you want to know how to fly a drone, you can take a class at the library and actually fly a drone. You can come and learn how to use a 3D printer and, in fact, print something on a 3D printer. These things are provided for, with grants from the Hudson Area Library Foundation, and the Friends of the Library, they do book sales for us and give us the funds to do things like that. And the libraries of the world are now sort of a cog in the community structure. We partner with other government agencies, nonprofits, and a lot of private businesses to provide services, so we are not duplicating efforts, and we're squeezing the most value out of the tax dollars, donations, and nonprofit dollars that are in our community. When we became a joint library, we became the 32nd-largest library in the state of Wisconsin. That's out of 380. We serve over 30,000 people, and that is 1/3 of St. Croix County's population. And I've been here once before, when I was still interim director, and I have been out and about for a year talking about the library's funding crisis. Depending on revenues and the expenditures approved by our board, we will be closing the library two to three days a week, along with cutting programs and services in a year, so sometime next summer. The history of this venture that we are all in together began with local leaders who had an idea for a better library. In 2002, four communities working together could have a much better library than four communities working separately. Also, the dollars that we had, more of them would stay local, because under the old structure, more of that money was being redistributed to other libraries in the county because of how the reimbursements work. So they put together a written agreement, and that written agreement specifically states its purpose, and that was to substantially increase library funding. There have been a lot of twists and turns along the way, and ultimately, through some unintended consequences, the library structure has become a way for all of us in our four communities to avoid those minimum funding requirements in law that every other community pays in our state. We are now, out of 380 libraries, 367 in per capita funding. So the state average is just over 54. St. Croix County average, over $53 per capita. We are at $23.70 per capita. And the simplest way that I can explain library funding, hopefully, we've nailed it right here. Every property owner pays a library tax. If you are in a community with a library, you pay your tax to the municipality, and if you don't live in a library's boundaries, the state considers you a rural resident, and you pay your library tax to the county. And each of those levels of government has a formula in law that tells them the minimum amount that they have to pay. So what happened in 2012 is we discovered that our four partners were not following the minimum funding law for libraries. So that year, 2012, the library was shorted $415,000. Now, that is not the cumulative effect of several years, that is one year. The library did not get $415,000. So the library's budget of about $700,000 would have been 1.12 million. Now, I want to be fair here, because there is no suggestion that there was malfeasance, that there was negligent intent. As far as everyone I've talked to who was involved, these were administrative oversights that happened. And I think it's also really important to mention that, at this time, our communities were going through some incredible changes. State aid to the communities was cut. Strict levy limits were imposed, and this was a tough time in the economy. So it's not like the four boards had all this extra money sitting in the bank that they could just whip out and spend. It was a tough time, tough decisions had to be made. So our communities went to the legislature, legislature intervened, the library did not get the $415,000. What they did do is they changed the minimum funding law for joint libraries. So there are 28 joint libraries in the state, we're one of them. And this change in the law applied only to joint libraries. We know it is the three-year average, and so our communities have been able to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars less than other communities in the state because of that change. So where does that leave us today? These are the amounts that the communities paid in '21, and the county has released your exempt amounts for '22, if you were still following that old law, okay? So the city of Hudson paid $364,000. Under the exemption, the county exemption law, they should have paid $585,000. So they're paying 62% of that county exemption amount. Now, if we notch over four spaces there to North Hudson, you paid $88,000 this year to the library. Your exempt amount is $128,000. So, and then you can see the two communities in between. I want to point out that your community pays proportionately more of your exempt amount than any of the four partners. You're paying 68% of your exempt amount, 62, 62, and St. Joe at 47. And I thank you for that, genuinely and sincerely. So I want to take a look at other St. Croix County communities, because this sort of demonstrates what's happened over the years. New Richmond, this is their 2019 city funding, and then their 2022 exempt amount. So there is that gap because of when the state data comes out. So the city of New Richmond gave its library $465,000. Their exempt amount, their minimum amount, is $190,000. So they're paying more than double the exemption. Go down to one of the smaller communities. Roberts paid $131,000 in 2019 to their library. Their exempt amount was $38,000. Now, my question, and I suspect everybody's question, is how are they doing that? Because those are some pretty incredible percentages, and from what I gather, we are talking about time and original size. So they have been following the funding laws for many, many years, starting with a bigger base and moving up more quickly. So when you look at the comparisons, the difference between the amounts just continue to get wider and wider. That's what's left us sort of far behind in relation to the other communities. Their base has simply started bigger and grown faster. That's why there's that gap. So we sent to you, and I'm here with a really big ask. The ask is for $19,000 increase, and that is 18%, and I know that is a substantial amount. When we started talking about the crisis throughout the last year, talking to individual city leaders, community leaders, and having meetings, we talked about a fully funded library would essentially be a doubled budget, and that was like immediately off the table. It's just not possible. So the conversation sort of settled on a 30%. Now, the city of Hudson is going to look at 30%. Nobody has voted, and nobody has committed, so I'm not here to lead you to that conclusion. I think it's very likely the city of Hudson is going to move in that direction. The town of St. Joseph has also talked about 30%. I'm going to be meeting with them later this week. Strong signals early on that that's the direction they were going to be going, and then I had two board members tell me at another meeting that that's not what they wanted. So I'm here to say, I don't know, coin toss. The town of Hudson will not consider this kind of increase. I've been told by our board representative, who serves on that board, that they will probably go with the three-year average, which will be a cut. So it's going to put all of us in the position of having a conversation about the joint library, its feasibility, and whether it's functional. From my perspective, it is functional and it is feasible. I think it is still a tremendous idea with tremendous potential, and that we can get there.
Do you think that if you got all this funding, that that would open up you guys seven days a week and be able to keep all of the different events you're doing going?
Kirk, this is supposed to be discussion only.
Oh, sorry, apologies.
Okay.
No, you're good.
Okay. So the solution that we have put out, really, it's three criteria. Sufficient funding, that is sustainable funding, and stable. There are other conversations about potential solutions for funding that are moving along, and it's possible that we could have more information in the upcoming days and weeks, and if something like that were to happen, certainly we would be adapting our requests to the communities. There's just a lot of plates in the air right now, and I wish I could pull a few of them out and talk about them, but we just really don't know yet where we're headed. So I know you had to go ahead and file your exemption notice with the county, and we had to make sure we had timely requests in for funding. So that's where we're all at right now. I also brought in some new data. We track the average costs of books, movies, et cetera, and then who checks them out over the course of a year. So residents who borrowed materials instead of purchasing them saved $3.8 million. This is 2019, which was our last normal circulation year, and so it will show you the amount of funding relative to savings for each community, with North Hudson there in purple. Also, I do get asked, so I did some quick calculations before I got here about cardholders and use in North Hudson. So you have a population of about 3,800 people with 1,500 households. You have 1,410 cardholders. Now, what I can't tell you is exactly how that spreads out, because that is 37% of your population, it's 93% of your household. Now, some families have one card for their household, because it's how they keep their kids from checking out books and losing them, one card. Some families give every kid in the family a card. So the true number is somewhere in between the two. So I wanted you to have both ends of that spectrum. I know it sounds like you're not here and able to ask questions, but I want to let you know that-
No, when you finish-
Okay.
That'll be the discussion portion.
Then, go ahead.
I just, I thought going in and out is going to, you know.
Got it. Thank you. Yes, so I can take your questions if you have them. I'm also always available, phone, email, or to meet if you have extra questions or just want to share your insight with me.
So now you're done with this?
Yes.
All right. Kirk, go.
Do you think that with all of this funding, you guys will be able to keep open seven days a week and all the events and everything you want to do, if everyone agreed to this new?
If everybody paid 30%?
No, if we've agreed what you're asking for. I guess you're asking us for 19%?
Yes. We would not get 100% of where we need to be. Some of the solutions that we're talking about would get us there. We just don't know what mechanisms are going to be available. So the first goal, I know our board wants to maintain ours, and particularly if we have to cut something, it would be that Sunday. We have not yet reopened on Sundays. We were open noon to four in the winter and the fall and the spring. So that's a huge priority. Programming is a huge priority. We had more than 20,000 people come to programs in 2019, and that's an incredible amount of people for a library our size. Where we've really taken the hit is in the collection. We spent $110,000 in the collection 10 years ago, and next year, we're going to spend $50,000. So books aren't getting cheaper, they're getting more expensive as everything else.
So outside of staff, you'd say that your collection is the next expense, highest expense, or what?
No, the building. We lease from the city of Hudson, and our lease is about $143,000 a year.
Any possible chance of negotiating that?
We are.
Ever thought about trying a different building?
The problem is the space, the size we need, and I know other board members who have thought this is, and this is in the past, have not liked this location or the price, have on their own gone out and looked at, like, what else could we do, and have found that the cost per square foot, completely, there's nothing close. And of course, this building, you know, it's used by, it's the city building, it's leased by a, another public agency. It doesn't pay property taxes. It doesn't have to charge as much as a private developer would have to charge. Yeah. So, you know, we, we get $364,000 from the city of Hudson, and we pay $143,000 for the building. And that's to cover our water, our electricity. We do share with the police, and there's some issues with the formula of the space allocation. So when you break the building down, we are in 40% of the building, and we pay 70% of the facility costs. So that is the negotiation we want to have. And, you know, I think that it's just fair to the other partners that we go in and make sure that allocation issue is addressed.
So the city pays 300 and whatever?
Yes.
But they also get the rent, which is?
$143,000.
$143 back?
Correct.
From, so that we're subsidizing the city by paying for the library rent?
We have an occupancy agreement that ensures we pay our heat, our electricity, our water, and the custodial services, and the lease payment, from the city's perspective, helps ensure that everybody is contributing to those costs. So on that end, it certainly makes sense. The allocation, I think, is an issue, because the city police are in a larger part of the building, and the janitor, for example, is a city employee. He makes more than our librarians make. We pay 70% of his salary. He splits his time between the two areas. There are issues like that, that I do not want to take on another five-year lease with those terms.
How long is your lease left with them, or at this current?
We renewed a one-year extension because of the transition with new city officials and a new director. Our previous director didn't really have plans to leave, and then the pandemic, you know, so things happened really quickly. So we did a one-year extension, and we will now need to be passing a new five-year occupancy agreement.
By what date?
We both want it in our budgets for 2022, so we're kind of getting down to the wire. And it's a topic that we have to make sure the state, because of our annual reporting requirements, that we're in line with their expectations as well. If you don't properly report your spending for a facility, and that is pure operation costs, anything you pay above and beyond what you can prove are operations has to go in a separate category, and that ultimately reduces your funding at the county level. Sorry, it's really complicated, but it's the way it is, and I'm not going to send in an annual report that I don't believe is 100% accurate.
Does anybody besides you get any additional aid from any other funding, just having a library in our community?
You mean outside of the county funding, and, you know, there are state grants, and we all get the benefit of the public library system, and that is 100% state-funded, and for us, that's ifless. That's, so every, the state is broken into a variety of systems. Those are funded by the state, although we do pay for some of their services. So in Wisconsin, libraries are paid for by counties and cities, villages, and towns. The federal money also kind of streams through a complicated grant process, if we get any at all. And I'll tell you, there's a lot of COVID money out there right now, and a lot of it is set aside for libraries. When you start picking through those grant opportunities, oh, the strings. Lots of strings attached. And for example, I'll tell you one thing, is if you, we did not have, we knew we were not going to get reimbursed for our COVID expenses, so we didn't do things. We just couldn't. Libraries that did now can get that money recovered. Well, if we had known that back then, maybe we would have put in hands-free sanitizers or redone our sinks, but I'm, there's no way I'm taking that kind of gamble. I'm not rolling the dice in the library with tax dollars.
And we've gone through that a lot as well. I understand where you're coming from of not being really specific of what you can do with this money.
Right.
Not do this money. And it's a big risk.
It is, and the details came out after the budget year. So then you're done. Also, a lot of those grants are targeted for certain communities that are more, have more underserved demographics than we do in this area, and I'm not here to debate whether that's right or wrong, it's just the way the grants are structured. So they tend to benefit some of the more urban areas that are more diverse than our community. So, yes.
Just a clarification on your 2022 slides. The green exempt amount, that is what we would pay if we were paying the county? Is that what you mean?
Correct. If the joint library no longer existed, exactly. That is what your taxpayers would be paying to-
So Baldwin, which is bigger than us, would only pay 74,000, and we would pay 128? How does that work?
It is based on your property values.
Okay. It's not population?
No.
Okay.
Nope. It's an equalization of property values.
Okay. That helps.
Yeah, it is, it's a very complicated formula, and it leaves people scratching their heads. It's very hard to-
Is the building paid for?
I don't know if it's been fully paid for. It was $2.5 million to purchase, and we've been in there 11 years.
What year is the 2.5 million right now?
So we, it was purchased in 2009, it opened in 2010. The renovations were paid for with library impact fees that had been collected from North Hudson and Hudson residents, along with a federal grant, and a bunch of donations that originally, people were thinking the foundation, the library itself, would buy the building, and that's ultimately not what happened.
Real quick, so those municipalities you're showing there, though, are not part of a joint library, though?
Correct. They are all municipal libraries.
So we're part of a joint, so we have four going together. You got to add them together. This is what I want to point out.
Yeah, so we'll go back to, so our total budget right now from the municipalities, so I'm not counting- from the municipality, so I'm not counting funding or grants, or county funding or grants, are if you tabulated the red bars. That would be our revenue from the four communities. And then the green bar is if we broke up, instead of paying three hundred and sixty-four thousand, the city of Hudson would be at five eighty-five.
Then they wouldn't be getting rent from you.
Correct, yeah.
When negotiations come in, Brian.
You know, and that's a tricky situation. If they decide to do a thirty percent increase and then look at the lease and make adjustments there as well. So it affects them on the expenditure side and the revenue side. It's, so it, it's not an easy ask for me because I understand, having met with so many local leaders about the pressures you're facing, and each municipality has its own unique issues, strengths, challenges. And I just want to be respectful of where each community is at, including the city of Hudson, although they're clearly the largest partner with a lot of growth. They still have, you know, significant funding problems.
I may not be phrasing this correctly, so I apologize. But now, the exempt amount, if we were to go to that model and we'd be paying directly to the county, I feel like I read somewhere that we would not, the library won't get all that money back either because something about it, and you would know better than I, spreads it out in some way? Can you elaborate on that, if that is in fact true?
Sure, so if we were just the city of Hudson Library, we would get five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the city of Hudson. Now, your community members probably still go to the same libraries, right? Except now they're not paying their library tax to North Hudson. Their library tax becomes a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and it gets paid directly to the county. Then the library reports, all the libraries report to the county where their patrons came from. And if it's not from your municipality, the county pays us per item checked out, circulated by people who don't live in our municipality. So all the people from North Hudson who come here, the county would pay us for your residents, your constituents. So.
And what happens to those dollars if they don't match up?
They don't match up because it is redistributed based on a cost-per-circ formula. So like, we have like ninety-seven percent of people use, from North Hudson, use our library. And there are like three percent who maybe go to Baldwin or River Falls. So the county would break up that hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and divvy it up. And that's one of the reasons that people originally came together is because when we band together, the amount that the taxpayers pay, all of it comes to the Hudson Library. Apart, when it goes funneled through the county, there's more redistribution to other communities. So we're keeping less of local tax dollars local. So I'm trying to answer that as simply as possible, but your point is absolutely correct. One of the reasons they wanted to be a joint library was so all the dollars in our communities would stay at this library instead of going elsewhere. Otherwise, it would just be a wash. You're, you're correct.
Two questions. First, can we get the PowerPoint so that Melissa, do you have it?
On the website.
Oh, yay, okay.
It's underneath the meeting.
Oh, okay. There it is, okay, super. And then, is your board, is our representative to the board? I mean, who's involved in the negotiations with the city? And how can we support or influence what's happening at the library to make sure that your rent is, is fair? And will help us to decide what's, do we, how to look at your request to this board to increase?
Well, Tracy Whitley is your representative to our board. And she wanted to be here tonight and wasn't able to. She's been a great board member. She has a finance and business background. And so she has brought tremendous perspective to the board and staff that we found really valuable. So certainly reach out to her and let her know where you stand. I know President Wetkin meets with other community, you know, the mayors and the town chairs. Certainly share your concerns with President Wetkin. And he will share them with Mayor O'Connell, O'Connor, excuse me, as well as, I'm sorry, am I putting you on the spot there? Tim Foster is the chair in Hudson. And Teresa Johnson is the chair in St. Joe. And so it's good for them to understand each other's, you know, perspectives. And I know they do talk to each other to ensure that the library is moving in the right direction.
She was a part of a couple COVID meetings, which it makes it a lot harder when you don't see them as well. But she did a couple updates during COVID.
You mean Tracy?
Tracy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I totally agree, where you don't see them, where you know someone, but those meetings make it a lot harder.
Right, I was just wondering if they were involved in this negotiation? Or is that you, you know, like, who's doing this and when's it going to be completed? So we can understand that.
Right. Right now, it's primarily at the staff level.
Are, are we ask questions from, no?
No.
But Shelley, if a citizen had a question, would they, how would they get that answered?
Certainly could call or email me. I'd be happy to hear what you have to say. My, well, the library phone number is on the website. Also, my email is on the website. My name is kind of tricky to spell. I can, I can write it down for you also, sir, when we're done here.
Anybody else on the board have questions for Shelley? Hearing none?
Good stuff, Shelley, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate your time. And thank you for letting us have programs in the park and the, before all the construction. That worked out really well for us. And thanks for your help, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty then, item five. New business from the border staff, president's comments. As they started out with their moment of silence, they said, please remember our heroes from twenty years ago on nine eleven. The firefighters, the police, and the numerous people that lost their lives trying to help their fellow man. And we also, on nine seventeen, there's, it's POW MIA Appreciation or Remembrance Day. Please remember those that have served and suffered through that. And the biggest one I'd like to say is, everybody knows that we're under construction and, you know, the social media has been just, I, I'll just leave it at, it's been just. But please, people, we need patience. Everybody's in a hurry right now. I mean, it doesn't matter hardly what street you're on right now. People are going too fast. They run stop signs. They, you know, the, we're trying to get through this single-lane bridge thing. Please, slow down and be patient. I mean, everybody is important. Everybody has to be somewhere. But, you know, let's do unto others as you'd have them do unto you. How about that? Melissa?
I just wanted to announce that the new website design was revealed last week. It's a more streamlined page and it's more visually appealing and user-friendly. And the website address is still the same, northhudsonvillage.org. And then updates on the Highway Thirty-five project will continue to be posted under the news and events category on the Village website. That's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa. Plan Commission Recommendations is item six. I don't know if they met.
No, they did not.
Thank you, Paul, for the update on that. Number seven is Personnel and Finance Committee Recommendations. Claims, approval, requests, and is there a motion?
Stan, can I move to approve the board's September seventh, twenty twenty-one non-reclaims of six hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-four cents?
Thank you. Kirk is here a second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. As we brought up in finance, there's, there's an awfully big number for our normal monthly fees. But the, the majority of that chunk is for the payment for the Thirty-five project. That's holding everybody up, so please.
Outside of the five hundred and sixty thousand, do we have anything else that's out of the ordinary?
No, there was some Public Works equipment that had been approved at the last Village Board meeting that was purchased and that falls under that fourteen thousand, eight fifty-five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the claims? Hearing none, it's a big spending issue this week. Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil, thank you. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Thank you. We can write the checks. Okay, item eight. Public Works Committee Meeting Recommendations. Chair update, Brian.
Since we did meet, we have one item to bring forward. We're recommending the completion of the sidewalk from five fifty-four Sixth Street North to Michelson Street North with costs not to exceed eight thousand dollars. And the funding is to come from ARPA lost revenue.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second? Do you second it?
Yeah.
Thanks, Phil. Discussion.
I just want to say that this is a process. A lot of this stuff, we would like to be brought in front of us. It's impossible for us as a board to know everything that goes on in North, North Hudson. But when people bring items up to us, we do want to fix them. And this is such a good example of how we have to take the proper steps with people's persistence. But it is getting done for the safety of North Hudson. And I'm incredibly proud of all of the people that have heard other people talking and are making this happen for the better of North Hudson. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there?
I have a question. When we, at our meeting, the funding wasn't confirmed. So Brian, are we, has that been confirmed that that's going to be able to come through that ARPA funding?
It's ARPA, a specific part of an ARPA funding. It's called the lost.
Lost revenue.
Revenue.
Yes, and it's been confirmed.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
And I would want to say my question from the last meeting about the approval from the state, that Patrick got that in writing and everything is good that way as well.
Yes, he's got it.
I also like to acknowledge our Public Works Director, Patrick, and the work he's done to make this cost-effective, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And to get it done in a very timely manner. I mean, once we started to take action, we were really under the gun, definitely.
Thank you, Amy.
Anything else? Okay, it says discussion and approval possible, and that's a spending issue, too.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Thank you. Item nine. Public Safety Committee Recommendations. Jim, you got anything?
Stan, we did meet, but we have nothing to carry, carry forward for this.
Thank you. Item ten, Public Welfare Committee Recommendations. Kirk?
We did not meet.
Okay, how about the Park Board?
Also, we did not meet.
Did not meet, okay. Alrighty then, that brings us to item twelve, which is the board may convene into closed session pursuant to statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent lower KZ, to deliberate, negotiate, or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive bargaining or competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to the water agreement. So if there is a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
And I'll second that.
Okay. So all in favor of going into closed session, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now going into closed session. So Jim and Walt, thank you for your. Okay, we are back in open session for a vote on the water agreement. And is there a motion to?
I motion that we approve the Water Service Agreement prepared August twelfth, twenty twenty-one and signed by the representatives of the city of Hudson in August twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mary, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jim, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mary made the, the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And yes.
Okay, we have an agreement with Hudson that will be signed and sent back to them.
Stan, can I motion to close session?
Do what?
I'm ready to close, or, sorry, go on.
I was just about to say this meeting is adjourned at eight, or seven fifty-seven. We don't need a motion for that. I learned that long ago. It takes you people too long for that.
Twice today.